My head from you, Donna. Just Donna. Can I get that?
I did work.
Oh, you put it back up there?
Sure.
Are you?
How are you?
Good, thanks. No, no, that's good.
I just assumed you were looking at the thing when you were.
This is mine. This is my stuff.
Your microphones are live?
No, I'm sorry. Is that what you're proposing?
Microphones are live.
Your microphones are live? I'm gonna call this meeting to order.
This is a special session of the designer review board for April 5th, 5:30 PM.
So, now, a little bit later than that. So, we're gonna have roll call. Peter Gapper is excused. Stephen Green?
Yeah.
Todd Conklin?
Here.
Michael McPartlin?
Here, and he's on?
What's that?
These are on?
Yeah. Frank Davis? You know Frank might have told us that he wasn't able to come when he was at, on Wednesday, I'm thinking. John Sky?
Here.
And Leslie Johns?
There Wesley Johns?
No. Oh, good.
Alright. The staff would like to inform all applicants that all items on the Dareview agenda will require building permit or assigned permit, and that design review board approval does not necessarily reflect the views and policies of the State Historical Preservation Office, which controls decisions impacting tax status of the designated contributing historic properties. Please review shipless policies if necessary. Contact them directly before making any exterior changes to your property. And on call to the public, we have Donna Polling. Donna, let me turn that microphone on.
Okay.
I please talk for everybody in the microphone.
Oh, yeah.
You know how to do that.
Thank you very much. My name is Donna Polling, and I live in Old Bisbee. I'm here to talk about preservation of windows. Commercial windows or residential windows. And I've printed out the guidelines from the National Park Service's website that addresses all of the guidelines and standards that are recommended from the National Park Service. And, of course, we follow those guidelines as closely as we possibly can in our attempt for preservation of our historic districts. And, in particular, I printed out the section regarding windows. And I know that there is an item on your agenda this evening regarding the replacement of some commercial windows. And I took a look on Main Street today, and I see that a number of the commercial buildings have done an excellent job of restoring their windows, the wooden windows that exist on the property. So, I'm hoping that we can continue that preservation attitude towards restoration. The National Park Service outlines, in their guidelines, they cite four steps in the preservation process. The first is preservation of the existing feature. Then rehabilitation, then restoration, then reconstruction. So, preservation is number one. And in regards to windows, it has, the way it's outlined here, and I will leave this for you guys so that you can perhaps get copies of it, so that you can look at it. But it's also on the National Historic Preservation website. Regarding windows, "Recommended: identifying, retaining, and preserving windows and their functional and decorative features that are important to the overall historic character of the building. Not recommended: altering windows or window features which are important in defining the historic character of the building; changing the appearance of the window that contribute to the historic character of the building, including finishes, colors, sash, depth of reveal, munted configuration, the reflectivity and color of the glazing, or the appearance of the frame." And it goes down a list of what the guidelines are regarding the preservation of, and what is recommended and what is not recommended regarding windows. I'm hoping that you take this matter very seriously in terms of approving vinyl clad windows or metal framed windows, and decide to encourage. It even has a picture of a badly damaged commercial window that they are recommending be retained. So, thank you for listening. I will leave this with you and hope that you can look at it and get some copies for your future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Polling. Item, Agenda, Item 1, selection of a chair and a vice chair from among the members, or a temporary chair for this meeting only.
At our last meeting, Joe, we determined, I think you were at the last meeting, because we did not have a full board, that we would vote to defer a vote on a chair and vice chair until we had as full as we can be at six members currently, because we've got two members missing.
Yeah. Really, I would have expected was you guys would want to do a temporary chair. Or not, you tell me. That's usually what we've done in the past, is why I put that there.
I can only speak for myself. I'm with the public here serving as de facto chair until we have a vote.
Sounds good to me.
Do I have a second?
Well, second then.
And a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, thank you, Michael, you're in charge.
Huh?
I thought you said you were gonna do?
No.
Really?
I said we would defer until we had a full complement, and then we would have you serve as de facto chair. I guess I really have a little bit of a liability with my.
Yeah, I didn't understand that either.
Okay.
So, we just allow you, Joe.
Alright, that's good enough. Okay, Item Agenda 2. This is a retro application for the sign at 63 Brewery Avenue. What happens is, like I explained at the last meeting, that very seldom, although we have two of them today, very seldom is a sign not administratively approved. But the fonts that are provided for us to use, neither of these are meeting the standards. And so, I punted you guys. And. And get the application.
I'm listening so.
I think it may be misplaced on the pad. It may be further than the pad for this one. This is second.
Yeah.
Since Ms. Chandler isn't here, I'm gonna go up to the thick and it's only signs.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna go ahead and present for her. And you guys see what the signs they propose. And the size of it is 19 inches by 28 inches, which the size isn't unreasonable. But you guys, you set direction on that.
So, your concern wasn't the size or scale, was the font?
Was the font, yeah.
Historic guidelines?
Mm-hmm. It's more of a modern font, and therefore wasn't qualifying for administrative approval.
It kind of looks like a kind of retro 50's kind of style, actually. It's sort of the fonts that I'm wild with, but it doesn't look like something contemporary. It's not vintage, going back to what we recommend, just in terms of the period. This part, the top part.
And then, where is this going? 63 Brewery Avenue?
Where's that?
I'm looking for... Is that going up at the green, that?
Yes.
We're agreeing, okay.
Yep. The actual sign is in place.
They're going way across from the city park.
And that's why I said it was a retro application.
It looks like a.
Oh, that pistachio green.
Mm-hmm. And it's got, it's got stripes of color in it.
So, Mr. Sky, Commissioner Sky mentioned that there's a style to the building?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think this font looks like the building that it's going on. It looks like it was big.
Is it, Joe, is there? I didn't take a look at the building. Yeah, my bad, but is this an older building? Is it contributing structure, is it non-contributing structure?
Well, generally, we don't go there with the, with the signs, is why I didn't.
It looks, it basically looks like a house.
But I'm certain it is contributing. I'm not absolutely certain, but it's a contributing structure for that commercial district.
So, it's not a circa 1950's structure or something later? It's an early 20th century?
They redid it.
Yes.
They redid it.
It's completely remodeled.
Twenty years ago, yeah. I don't think it's.
Restor frames? It's directly across from the, well, not directly, popped up right from the city park, that green building.
Oh, a different structure.
Yeah.
It's up from Silver King.
It's right next to that empty lot.
That Silver King.
Yeah, that's on a 50, I mean, although it's been redone, it's been redone in a mostly say period style
for what the building originally was.
Yeah.
So, it's not that it's like a building that was remodeled into a 50's style. This is kind of echoing the 50's style of the building.
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you. Joe, one other question. Did you discuss with the applicant doing some other different font? Or why they didn't go use the recommended font styles that are in the design review guidelines? Had they even consulted those, or were they aware of them?
They put up a sign without consulting anybody. The sign's been there for a while. And their cards and all kinds of, and she said that that was kind of a, her logo that she was using, because since it was on her cards and it's on her advertising and everything. And so, when I told her that it wasn't meeting the standards of the guidelines, then that's why she wanted, instead of changing it, she wanted to come to the board and ask the board for.
Forgiveness.
Permission to use it.
I mean, it's a hanging sign?
What's that?
Is it a hanging sign?
Yes, it is.
Or is it attached to the building?
It's attached to the building, and it's hanging perpendicular to the street. Or no, parallel to the street, I need to say.
Sorry, I guess there's a, is there anyone from the public that wants to speak to this?
Does this sign look like?
How long's it been hanging there, Joe?
About a year, I believe.
I mean, I probably draw a facet sign. Yeah, I know you draw facet signs.
Oh, yeah, I find your job, I didn't even notice.
I'm like willing to forgive this on it, because I think it's reasonable. Yeah.
She already paid for the sign.
Yeah.
It's not offending your, but don't let that be the reason. It's not offending your sense of style.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve application, 1918.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, pass the three to one. Okay. Agenda, Item 3. This is an application for a sign at 24 Main Street. Now, once again, the fonts don't match what we're looking at. This is, this is a contributing structure. And it's your call.
Are you representing the applicant?
I am representing the applicant, do you want me to stand there?
I'm okay with him seeing.
You're okay, you don't have to be there.
As long as you're recording.
Yeah.
I'd like to get these stood up here, please.
Take my hat out of this bag.
So, what's going on with this one?
Would you want us to know, based upon what we have in this application?
Say it again?
What would you like us to know beyond what we see in the application?
What's going on with this one?
If the sign is not meeting the standards, in my opinion, and so, I decided that I couldn't, I couldn't do it administratively.
Yeah.
And you guys can decide.
It concerns me that it's something that's on Main Street. It's highly visible.
Yeah.
I mean, the other sign, even though by virtue of time has been there too long without any action occurring, at least has a retro style, which within the vibe of Old Bisbee Commercial District is not outside the scope of things we've supported before. But this, to me, is, has no retro reference. It's not meeting our signage guidelines. So, it's highly visible, and I, it's something I have real concern about.
I think it's gonna be brushed metal, too, for the surface.
So, it's gonna be highly visible and highly noticeable.
And then they just use the lettering from like those packs of letters that you can buy at the hardware store, so there's really not a whole lot of thought.
I think it's setting a bad precedent for.
Yeah, I think the lettering's gonna be, gonna be cut out of the iron.
So, what, the notches aren't gonna be in there? Is that the, you know, the little notches that they have to hold the centers in them?
Yeah, yeah, the notches will be down, sure, yeah. I'm just saying it's not, it's not numbered, it's not letters by the hardware store.
It's supposed to be like a plasma cut?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. I kind of agree with Michael on this one.
I think, I think we should have a look at the guidelines and come up with a new idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we ask the representative of 24 Main Street, DRB number 19-17, to resubmit with fonts that are in compliance with our guidelines.
I second.
Who seconded?
Michael.
Yeah, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes unanimous. Okay, the next one, we're not gonna have a quorum.
Yeah, because I'm not to recuse myself from this next one.
Do you want Todd to recuse himself?
I choose, I choose to recuse myself from the next application one. Okay.
But, but just for point of information, Joe, we had voted on this previously at our last meeting. My, correct me if I'm wrong, just in terms of proper process, I would expect, once we voted on an application, just, I'm thinking in very logical terms here, and we're not all logical, but once we voted on an application, and if it hasn't passed, then it's either a resubmit of a new application with whatever's new in that application, or it's to Board of Adjustment to ask for a different decision. So, I was confused when I saw this, that we were being asked to review it after we had made a decision, which was a tie vote, but it was a vote, which means it did not pass.
Yeah.
And I was concerned from a precedent standpoint, of all the other tie votes we've had, where something in effect did not pass, that we would be vulnerable to, in terms of being challenged on other decisions we've made, if it did not go to the Board of Adjustment as its next step. And I thought, I understood, at that point, if they wanted to make a change from what they originally submitted us, they could do that there as well, so that that Board of Adjustment could weigh all the factors, new information, changes, along with what our basis for our decision is. So, again, can you just clarify why we're seeing this again?
It was my understanding that they were gonna, they were gonna propose some additional, some additional changes to bring the, the structure closer to compliance, was why we were redoing, we were rehearing this.
Is it in the package?
No.
It is not.
So, again, just from a due process standpoint, not from the merits of the case, just due process, wouldn't they be best served to do that with the Board of Adjustment, not us?
It would seem. I think you're probably right, Michael.
Okay.
No offense intended.
Because I want to be fair to understand what our processes are.
Yeah.
Because what I don't want is, we would look at something and then be challenged by someone else who'd say, "Well, why didn't you give me that option? Because I had to go to the Board of Adjustment, they said yes or no, whatever. I wasn't given that as an option." That's, that's my concern. And given some of the legal actions that you know have occurred, I don't want to be doing something that further compromises the City of Bisbee in terms of a legal challenge.
Okay, well noted.
I agree.
Agenda, Item 5.
So, do we want to just recommend that this go, follow the process as it exists, to go before the Board of Adjustment? Just so we're clear as commissioners, if we vote on it, what we're doing?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Because it seems that there's some lack of clarity that brought this here. I just would want us to be very clear as to what our intention and understanding is.
So, what you, what you would like is there for, to be another application? Or a Board of Adjustments adjust?
I think those are what the due process options are, given to the public. So, if we're buying, but those options are, that would be, would I be recommending, yes?
And if I may say something here, I don't think it's fair to the applicant whenever we have a board, whenever we have members that are out and completely missing, that I'm gonna be recusing myself from this application because of the proximity and the relationship with the neighbor. So, we could run in, you guys could run into a situation where if we didn't have a full quorum, then I would recuse myself, and then you guys would be stuck in the city, you know, and you'd stuck where you guys couldn't get a vote on your application. And so, I'm trying to be totally fair here with you guys. So, I cannot vote on this application.
No, I agree with, without a full quorum.
And that's being completely fair to you guys.
Could be answered.
So, it, that was kind of personal in a way, but also just letting you know where I stand on this application.
And if our city council rep was here, we could also give that feedback to her, but she's not here. And I don't believe she's been here for the last several meetings, if I have that. Because it's the city council, it's something, oh, mayor, that had been unable to come to agreement to nominate more members to our commission. So, we've faced with this issue for several months now, where we either don't have quorum, or in a case like this, where someone has to recuse themselves. We don't have enough other members as a full board to still be able to vote on this issue. So, I know for me, it's been very frustrating, because I feel we're doing our best to the public, but it's the council and mayor that have to nominate new members so we can have a full commission again. And we've been without that for the last three months at least.
So, at this point, they have to rearrange their application or go to the Board of Adjustment?
I think per our brilliant expectation, they either need to submit a new application with new information for us to consider it, or appeal to the Board of Adjustment with either new information or the existing material they presented to us originally. Do I understand correctly, Mr. Ward? Those are their, those are their due process options?
I think it is, yeah.
Joe, if you could also relay the information of what I just told the applicant that I cannot vote on this application, so we could come into a situation like this, if I recuse myself, we don't have a quorum, they can't get a vote, and it's not fair to the applicant. That, I feel.
So, what are you saying? You think their best bet is to go to the Board of Adjustment?
I can't recommend anything.
Item number five is.
So, we were gonna make, we were gonna make it a motion that we recommend that this applicant follow the due process options. They either resubmit an application with new information to the design review board for consideration, or go to the Board of Adjustment with whatever material they want to provide, either the existing material that we tied, tied vote on, or with new information that would bring this structure more in compliance with historic guidelines. That's my recommend.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay. I'm going to jump over item number five and go to item number six. This is Bisbee Commercial Historic District, contributing structure 55, it's at 55 Main Street. And the applicant is seeking approval to remove some double hung windows, replace with light vinyl windows, and to remove a rear service entrance, double doors installed, new commercial insulated doors. The applicant is Son Boucha there, who is represented by Johnny Raby.
Johnny Raby, I think they said, proposing to install those four windows on the top there on those pictures. They are vinyl windows. The specs on them are included in there somewhere. They're really expensive, high-end windows. And, and the door on the bottom, that one's gonna be a commercial door, just a flush finish. The other one on the side by the wall, or if it's kind of an example of, you know, the one's smooth and the other one's panel, so.
Oh, we're talking about the open?
Doors and those there.
Either these are proposal or the ones that are.
No, those are, those are on the walls, maybe. So, those are the examples of the ones. The one on my side is a green little panel door, so they're in a different age.
I was just preparing to explain that to you guys.
Yeah.
Yep.
See those green ones down there? Okay, yeah, those are the ones I'm gonna replace.
Those are the existing doors. And you're gonna replace them with one that looks like this?
Yeah, kind of. There's a picture and there are some.
Yeah, we got the picture.
Yeah, I got it.
I didn't have any pictures of the doors that you're proposing.
Okay, because I gave you.
Yeah, we got it right here.
No, but the actual picture of the window and the doors that I'm gonna put in there.
Oh, they got a picture of the window.
I have a package, there's a window there.
We have pictures of the windows, but nothing of the doors.
I'm not seeing any picture of the door.
And the door, there should be a.
There isn't.
Cochise County could not, could not verify that anybody left, that you left anything there? They didn't have anything for me?
Yeah, I know, I got cleared out all the.
But in either case, this is what you intended for us to have? This is a picture of the window style?
Yes, sir.
And these are the specs that go along with that vinyl window?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I thought I had.
Do you at least have a picture on your phone of what the door's gonna look like?
I think I'm a little hungry though. The doors are just gonna be flush doors, steel doors, is all they're gonna be. Okay, they're commercial, they're gonna have a lot of artwork in there, and it'd be kind of high-end sturdy doors.
Excuse me, Johnny. So, was the Cochise, was Peter supposed to submit this picture of the door?
These are the ones that, a week ago, Peter didn't have the.
Mr. Rutter?
Remember, we looked around for the, for the photograph, and it was determined, yeah, they were given to the county.
Johnny, did you submit the picture of the door to Peter?
All I got is, what I said, what I thought I had submitted was the, when I bought the stuff, it's got the pictures on the, on the invoices and stuff like that.
What I'm asking you is, did you submit a picture of the door that you're proposing?
No. Like, I thought I did, but I didn't, I guess. But all it is is a flush door.
Did you have somebody the picture of the door?
No.
You did have, okay.
Um.
It seems like you're gonna. Very angry times.
I'm like, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if our applications are, are incomplete?
Well, last week, they.
Well, we're.
That's been a habit.
I don't think it's incomplete by any, by any.
There you go.
By, by any accident.
Johnny, why are the doors being replaced?
See, so the guy, Johnny, I've got all your stuff, and I'm not.
Okay, so those.
Is this doors? Yeah, I guess maybe it is, but that doesn't show anymore than you did.
Give us something else that.
Can I see that color copy, Joe, of the window?
Yeah, right here.
Can I?
Oh, you want to take these, you're looking at it.
Hold it and.
These are the.
Because this other one's like all black.
There are a couple of colored ones.
This is the.
It costs so much money for colored copies, I do need my mic when I get them out that quick shot.
I don't know if the writing's as good as the picture. The picture, this is the picture, they each have a picture. This is a flush door.
Yeah, it's really difficult to make that.
I mean.
Is there, is there any glass in the door, or no? Because we didn't have to register something that's a lot associated with these.
Those are just the double end materials, still bordering out, flush glass, one oak glass, and, and more.
Johnny, we want to make sure we get you on the mic, right, so you're recorded. And I think you had, Commissioner Green had a question.
My question is, why are the doors going to be replaced? Because they're rather classic doors.
Well, he's got a lot of artwork going in there, and the doors that are there are those wooden, those wooden panels. And the doors that are there are those wooden, uh, those wooden, wooden panel doors.
This used to be the country store, right?
It's a Belize gallery, is that it?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So it's more of a, it's more of a security concern?
It's kind of a security thing, and that's why I took a picture of the adjoining doors next to them, to give you an example, you know?
If you did look at the picture that, that we provided there in the lower right-hand quadrant of that, um, existing door, you can see that it's weather damaged. This, this is basically an interior door probably that was used here.
All right, um, given the information that Ms. Pauline brought up, and she brought this, okay, if you wanna look at that, and I'll try to explain it to you, but that's where, you know, we gotta ask you why the windows are gonna be replaced. What's wrong with these windows?
Uh, insulation properties, uh, you know, basically, and, and the owner wants everything nice and sealed tight for security purposes as well. And...
Historic district is gonna have single pane windows because they're historic. It's gonna have drafty rattling windows because they're historic. And we gotta draw the line somewhere between what's acceptable, and we don't need to bring it up to code because it's an old building. As soon as you change those windows, it's a whole new ballgame really. And I, I think that's the point we're trying to make here is that if we're gonna preserve, then that's what we gotta do. And if, if we're gonna replace, then we're already got problems in town with this kind of stuff.
And what she brought up is that it says in here to replacing windows solely because of peeling paint, broken glass, stuck stash, or high air infiltration. These conditions in themselves do not indicate that windows are beyond repair. So, I mean, there's that.
Is there room on the inside, John, for, um, for, for putting in new windows? You know, I've seen those in historic, historic properties and other places where they're putting them inside, they're leaving the other windows.
Leaving the frame and everything.
Is there, is there room on the frame on the inside to, to put?
Well, I see what you're saying.
To put your windows from, so you're insulating, but you're maintaining the look on the outside.
Like a storm window on the inside or something like that?
Actually, they recommend a storm window on the outside, according to the guidelines.
Yeah, but, but the inside doesn't, is not the purview of the...
Well, I, I think what Joel's talking about is that if you put it on the inside, it won't be seen, so if it's on the...
Seeing a storm window on the outside is according to the guy, I, I should be addressing...
Oh, no, we're not talking about a storm, are you talking about a storm window or just like a regular window?
The, the regular windows.
Yeah, so you put a regular window in there, and then when you look through the window, you just, you don't see anything, it just looks like the window.
All right, well...
That's a good compromise.
Yeah, cause I mean, it's, it's pretty clear here that you could have to save windows if they can be saved. So that, you're hitting the dead end there, and I probably have not hit, you know, I probably would've just...
I, I might even bought these windows already on the assumption that same, same, okay? And now we're bringing this up, and I'm gonna be fucking three thousand dollars in the hole here or whatever.
They're not, they're not the same. They're not the same as the...
Same style, and that's the way you're approving everything before?
They're not the same in design. They're a modern window that looks nice, but they're not the same as the style and how these windows are constructed.
None of these double hung, single one hung windows on these houses are the same as the ones that we pull out of the houses.
This is, but this isn't a house, it's a commercial building, and the commercial district generally, but from this commission, from my experience, is held onto a high standard. If it is understood, it's the core of our historic district standard.
Well, I understand all that, I understand why they eat these, I guess.
I was ready to approve this thing, but given the information, it's, you know, it makes it hard to go against the books that we're supposed to follow. And because the prior people in the past let these things go, that's what we did. We're getting hammered on all the time that we have to solve.
Whatever you gotta do.
Just in terms of, I mean, the applicant's still presenting, we have questions, but if we're ready for discussion amongst ourselves, I, I would just...
Is there, is there...
This is the public meeting, if any of the public want out, talk about this.
Is there, is there a call?
So we, so, no, publics? Okay, I remember the public wants to speak, but so, on a microphone, please. Joe's providing one to you there, so Johnny can stay if he wants to.
Excuse me. I understand there's, um, some due diligence that has to occur with the contractors that are entrusted to represent the client. This information is available on the website. It's a historic district, and perhaps contractors need to start consulting the guidelines that are provided by the National Historic Preservation Office, so that they won't be faced with these dilemmas of purchasing materials prior to the approval. Thank you.
Um, do you think that your client would show some interest in saving the windows? I mean, obviously, there would be some money to be made in, uh, you know, fixing the existing windows and then putting windows behind to make it so...
I'm trying to get, talk them, talk them into putting those one windows on the inside or something if that was...
Yeah, see, that, that was the, that was the compromise that I was kind of getting at, is that leave the other windows intact and then install the ones that you are, in your application on the inside. You would never, it would give the energy, efficiency that you're looking for, and then the exterior would still be the single pane, commercial...
Original windows. Then you win if you give another drawdown.
And it's, it's, I, it's really the only compromise that I can come to, Johnny. Because, because it's true, because we, we are getting put into a situation where we're being asked to alter these, these, these commercial buildings, and on the residential side, it is different.
Yeah, I can see where that...
There is leniency more on that, but, but on this, it's, it's true.
As long as it's gonna turn into the residential.
But it's a higher standard. But just for the future too, it's a higher standard on the commercial.
Yeah, I understand that, dude.
It's, it's the core of what started our historic district, was the commercial district, as you may know, and it's, you know, the buildings that are much noteworthy in terms of architectural value. Residentially, yes, there's an historic value, cultural value, but many of those buildings are fairly humble, the residential buildings. You've worked on many of them, as you know. The commercial buildings generally are a fairly high architectural standard, very care was put into those buildings, and it's what initiated our historic district standing or status with the government. Do you think that the, I'm just, now I'm just asking practically, do you think those windows depths or the shelves of those windows are deep enough to do what Todd's suggesting? Or you have the new window behind the...
Well, if not, I'm gonna have to do a little framing detail on the inside to, to set them in there and have that all sealed off somehow or...
Is the ROs, are the ROs, I'm getting a little, are the ROs the same roughly from, from...
No.
No?
No, because all I did, I was gonna leave the frame and just stab the, that, that whole frame and window inside that frame.
It's technically out of my purview to ask that, but I was just, I was just curious.
So that, so, so there's a, at least a potential to resolve or address the windows where the seal and if there's artwork going in, there are other concerns about humidity. There may be other concerns the owner has to about controlling the interior environment, but at least we maintain the exterior windows. Obviously, they have to be fixed up, have to be repaired, so you're not, they're not gonna be functional, opening and closing, they're not simply gonna turn to dust.
Gonna paint them brown?
Oh, well, we don't pick colors.
We don't pick colors.
We ain't commercial enough.
Right, but, but, so that, so the existing windows need to be repaired, but the new windows could hopefully slip behind there, so the owner gets what he wants, right? You get what you want, not a three thousand dollar write-off cost of windows you purchased, and we get what we want for the historic district.
It's a win-win.
Right. So that, that addresses the window piece. The door piece below, I mean, I, when I see those doors and I look at the other commercial doors you can see on some of the other structures, I mean, I do kind of look at these doors as much as they're historic and go, they're not for a commercial structure, right? They're not secure.
Oh, you're talking about the...
Yeah, there's nothing fancy about these doors.
You know, I want to see them, if someone wanted to reutilize them or, or, you know, repurpose them somewhere else, I hate to see them just tossed, but it doesn't seem that they, you know, weren't or made, because we don't know if they're even the original doors to the building, given...
I doubt it.
Given the kind of door they are, they, they don't look like a commercial door.
And this isn't, this isn't an application like Al Aderson's, whenever he came in and they were just, remember, remember the one where you recommended that they leave the doors intact? This is, those are actually functional.
Because that also seems pretty clear that those were original to the structure.
Well, these got busted in so much because of the country store that they have to be different.
I, I don't see a, a problem, and, and you, and you intend on matching them to the Woolworths?
Yeah, pretty much, they're gonna be just like those, with that one behind it.
So that's, that's not matching the Woolworths, because those were older, but...
Well, once they're black, and I'll beat them up a little bit if you want, but, um, you know, there's probably gonna be a little sign on there, a little fancy sign on there saying, you know, what number the building is, I don't know.
So I think I'd feel more comfortable about replacing the doors if I could be clear that there're gonna be a doorstep, a metal door that's, you know, is the security issue the applicant's concerned about, but also have enough of a retro style to other metal security doors on that stretch, because we've made a point as a commission with both subway as well as Main Street of trying to maintain the integrity of the, the style of buildings on both sides. As we've seen, the subway's become reactivated, more business investments occurred along subway, it's clear that that, along with the once a month weekend closures, that is becoming a vital commercial strip as well as Main Street. So I think that was part of Mr. Commissioner Scott's intent in with the other bill was let's maintain the integrity of Subway Street as much as possible. Seems to me we addressed that with the windows, the proposal Mr. Commissioner Tom came up with, but if we could get some better idea of what kind of metal door you would use or come up with a metal door that, that looks more like a Woolworth door versus that more modern door, I'd feel much more comfortable with saying, yeah, fine, replace these doors with metal door, or one that can hackle a little style, or something that's more period to this building.
That's all that door is, is just beat up, that Woolworth door.
Here's a, here's a color picture.
Oh, thanks.
Maybe easier to see.
Well, actually, that Woolworth door looks like a wood frame door that had metal applied to, because you can see pockets of her panels or, and a window on top. So that's the door on the right, take a look at it. The door on the left looks like it might actually be a metal door with rivets going around the edges of it, that looks period.
That's the one I'm trying to call fish on one of them today.
So if you can find one of those doors, I'd be all in to say yes, replace the...
I can't find one of those doors. I already bought that door too.
But the problem is that we don't have a picture of the door.
Where's the picture? So it's literally a metal door like this?
Yeah, I mean, we can antique it if you want somehow or another.
Good idea. Bang some rivets in it.
I'll put some...
Antique it, make it look like it's been there as long as it's...
Make it look like this one on the edge, it's got here how has the rivets? Give it something, Johnny.
I'll give you something.
Okay, you're willing to...
But give me something.
Well, we give you plenty of...
We're trying to work this out.
Don't work with you two already in the home.
So if you can, if you're willing to modify the, the modern metal door that you purchased, so as Commissioner Green suggested, you could add rivets to the edging to it, you know, bang it up a little bit, but not so much you compromise its use. For me, that's something I could support, because obviously, security's a real issue for that particular building, and it breaks, and clearly, those wooden doors were not original to the structure either.
What I'll probably do is just put some kind of scrapping on it with some kind of little details on it or something like that, you know?
Make it unique.
And can you provide to me a picture to Mr. Ward, so he can follow with us and say, here, here's what Mr. Raby did per your guidance, and this is just the follow-up to confirm what the modifications were made to that metal door?
I think that's fair.
Yes? Do we have, do we have something working here? It sounds like we did.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve application twelve dash nine, is that the one?
Do you want to make an amendment to it?
This, BI dash fifty-five?
Oh, okay, there's two online. So what are we going off of?
Joe, we have two numbering systems on the D or B application, what does that mean? One says twelve dash nine, BI dash fifty-five. And on the agenda, it's identified as BI fifty-five. Here's the agenda.
Do you know what your application is?
And then here's...
Oh, let me see that.
Twelve oh nine? Four oh nine?
Let me see what I have on mine, because I think mine was printed off the newer version, because I, I couldn't get, I don't, I'm not in charge of the numbers anymore. So I, I have to...
We're just gonna go off the twelve oh nine.
Twelve oh nine's on the application.
On the written application.
Let's just reference both of them. Okay, twelve oh nine is on it, then that's the one that it is.
I mean, that's in the slot, maybe just throw some... Okay, so I, I wanna make the motion to approve application number twelve dash oh nine, uh, or BI dash fifty-five.
That was a contributing property number.
With the amendment of retaining and preserving the existing windows, and also letting payers, et cetera, put interior windows in front of those, going with the door that was presented, but antiqued?
Rivets.
Uh, rivets and antiquing, and that would be my motion.
And just, just to clarify, Commissioner Scott, when you say in front of, in terms of the windows, you mean behind the exterior?
Behind the exterior windows, uh, inside of the, the building.
Uh, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Raby.
Okay, that takes us back to agenda item number, from low, please, five. And, um, that's application eighteen eighty-one, in the residential district, contributing property seven twenty-one. Seeking approval to construct a two hundred square foot, one car garage, attached to an existing laundry storage building. Applicant is Mr. Todd Bogutek. We've been waiting for this one, Todd. We've been waiting for this one.
Joe, is that my agenda or construction? It's a ten by twenty.
What'd you want?
You took my agenda.
Oh, I gave it back to John, I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought I got it. Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
We have, we have...
Ten by twenty garage.
We have it over here.
We have it.
Go ahead and...
It's a ten by twenty garage, uh, added on to the existing maintenance and laundry at the bottom of the pub, fifty pub. It's tucked in underneath a large oak tree.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna put an addition on the existing laundry room? Is that what you're proposing?
It's ten by twenty.
And then, and then you, what kind of material are you trying to, or are you planning on using? What kind of material?
It's a garage for convertible.
The construction, what materials do you plan on building with?
Material, it's the same as the existing shed, uh, board plywood with battens every sixteen inches.
So it'll be boarding back?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh...
Plywood with battens.
Yes, boarding that. So...
Explain that on this sheet here.
What type, well, I mean, I looked at this, what, how many months ago? So I, I didn't...
Probably three.
Yeah, well, I don't know, whenever you put your application in, I went up there, I looked at the whole thing, I studied your application, and now I have completely forgot it, because it's been...
It's been too much time.
Yeah.
It's probably my fault.
Yeah, I, I mean, to be honest with you, I was gonna ask to take this off, because we keep talking about it.
December twenty-sixth was the day you paid for it.
So what type of roofing do you wanna put on there?
Corrugated steel, like the existing.
Okay, would that be the corrugated that were... Okay, would that be the corrugated that will rest or the one that doesn't rest?
He's got it marked as galvanized.
Yeah, it's corrugated, exactly like what's on the pueblo and on the laundry shop.
Okay, cool. So you, you pretty much want to match everything up?
It's the best roof.
Great.
That you can have in Bisbee.
Great.
Maintenance free, make approved.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions that I really have.
What would be the offset to the property lines, Todd? What, what will be your, um, your offsets to the property line from the proposed structure?
The offsets of the property line.
The offset. How far would you be off the property line?
Oh, um...
See, it's not, it's not plain from looking at you.
Oh, it's 30 feet.
Sounds like you have more than enough.
I'm getting hard of hearing.
I said it sounds like you have way more than enough.
Space.
I think so.
Space, enough offset.
Yeah.
You're far enough from the property line, it's gonna be okay.
When it's done, it'll look like it's always been the... Are there any questions?
I have no questions for this application.
I propose that we approve application 18-81 as submitted.
Uh, I will second that motion.
Start for the delay I'm writing down to go.
Yes?
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good to go.
I had a, a thought the other day. I saw a building. This is a totally different kettle of fish. The old, uh, American Legion on the alley in downtown Bisbee is for sale. I'm getting a little old for doing back under the thing, but I would love to tear out the first floor front and make it all glass with a heart gallery on the first floor.
Sorry, Todd, but we're, we're deviating off the agenda. We can't, we're not allowed to talk about things that aren't on the agenda?
Can't talk about them.
Maybe we can write into each other on this, really.
Yeah.
Or if you purchased it and you decided to bring an application.
I haven't purchased it, I'm just thinking about it.
We could put, you could make an application. We'll put it on the agenda next month. How about that?
Okay.
Act of three weeks.
If I get closer to buying it.
Well, your application was...
It'll be a $25, it'll be a $25 investment.
Yeah.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I know this, this job I was on with committee at one of them.
Well, you're welcome back. We have an opening.
Okay. Last comment.
Any comments or administrative things we need to note about?
Would you like to move on?
Yeah, thank you.
Pretty, pretty valuable.
Have a good night.
There's a boat bridge over at 411, um, Garden Avenue that was going across the, the Mule Gulch that, um, contractor was replacing. I put a stop work order on them because they didn't have, they didn't have DRB approval or building permit. And, um, he has provided, provided them here.
And this bridge actually goes over the gulch, like Tumsen Canyon.
Mule Gulch, yeah. They're by the circle pit.
You have that stuff lying in the old barriers.
So, so this actually, what was being replaced, actually, although the property has a Garden Avenue address, this is visible from Tumsen Canyon draw.
It's got an apartment, it's got an apartment in the back that, that has no access from the front, so you have to go across that bridge, yeah.
Is it a like-for-like situation?
It, it, it's exactly like-for-like. I didn't think it was going to be since it was gonna need, since it was needing to be engineered, but, um, that didn't prove it.
If it's like-for-like, I don't have an issue.
Oh, and so if not, this isn't asking your permission, this is showing you what I approved.
Oh, what you did.
This is an administrative approval.
So it was the role of the... So you, so you did approve the like-for-like replacement of the pedestrian bridge that goes over the...
Yes, and you'll see on that, on that, I believe the application's in there with my, my approval on it as submitted.
Good job, Joe.
And I was just giving you, showing, giving you guys a heads up on what I'd approved on that.
Awesome. Good job.
Is it?
Is that it?
What's that? That's all, that's all that I have.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming for the second time.
Make the motion to adjourn?
We have to first do the last, the last thing, which is future agenda items, and then you can make your motion.
Oh, the, um, and my staff, my, my administrative or staff comments also, I think that we should put, we should put these, the window items onto, when we, if we have a work session, that the, the windows should be part, a parcel of it to see what, we've got to have a firm policy in place instead of, instead of the wind blows from the south some days and it blows from the north the next day. You know, and, and we're all capable of that. I'm not, I'm not being critical. I'm just saying that if we get something solid, then we have to all stand by that. I think that would be helpful.
I think the next to last applicant illustrated why, because he referenced residential structures with a commercial structure he's currently working on and conflated the two. Well, we've tried to make a very clear distinction between the commercial district versus residential structures trying to be flexible where we thought it was appropriate.
The same, the same standards that were provided by, by Ms. Polling would apply equally to both the commercial and the residential district. But I'd like to, I'd like to have a unified, um...
Well, you know, the problem with that too is you let, you know, there's actually people living in the houses and then the, you know, the commercial places, you know, they're gonna be expensive to heat and cool anyways. That's the way I think about it. Um, and really, what do they have?
This isn't, this isn't a discuss, we can't discuss it.
You're just, you're recommending that this, this be on our workshop.
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm saying, that I'm recommending that we put this to the workshop and, um, discuss it at that point. But you guys can start thinking, thinking heavily about this and how you want it, how you want to...
Doors also. If we're on windows, we might as well do doors also.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get pretty comprehensive.
Compromising situation again.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, on future agenda items.
Uh, is, uh, can we either have a review or, I'm not sure if this is a better place at, you know, in our workshop, in our sort of special workshop area or on a regular agenda, but just to review of how we address, uh, what would you call it, code violation issues before they get to the point that property is so degraded, window, these windows, doors as examples, that they are beyond repair. In other words, how can we do more proactively? How can we work with you, the city of Bisbee and building inspectors, so more proactively? No owners are cited. Maybe if we just start with the commercial district as a suggestion, as a way to notice owners about, uh, aspects, historic aspects of the exterior, so they don't get to such a point that someone can then come here and say, oh, well, these windows were shot, but they've been shot for 10 years and we've allowed 10 years to go by without ever saying, fix your window. This, this is a code violation. So that wasn't very succinct, I know, but something talking about
Okay.
Maintenance of, of buildings, exterior maintenance of buildings, uh, code enforcement on historic structures in more comprehensive and consistent fashion. Does that sound better?
I agree. You have anything else, though?
So that's on this agenda item for the next meeting.
The code enforcement of...
Well, windows and doors issue, yeah.
Windows endorsement, I think he was suggesting is a workshop topic or a special session where we really go into dealing with our, our guidelines, updating the guidelines and making clear. Yeah, did I understand you correctly, Joe?
Yeah, updating the guidelines. I, I suspect you guys are gonna work on that for a year. But, but we have to start somewhere and we have to start and we have to get, and it'll probably be, well, it'll be, it'll be just a continuing, like we've done in the past, you know, that we, we had a continuing, um, agenda item that just kept running as long as, as long as there was work to be done. And, um, you know, dollars are made out of nickels and dimes as well as pennies, and as much as you guys get done will be as much as you get done, but it's all good progress towards the goal.
And then on the next agenda, uh, I asked to put an item up for discussion. Would that still be on there? Do I need to ask for that again or?
It should still be on there because Peter's in charge of that.
But just to be clear, what was that item?
Uh, the discussion about, uh... Reappointing our chairman.
Ken Budge.
Ken Budge, and I have some, uh, you know, I have some
Legal?
Some legal, uh, city, you know, city codes and stuff that have, that talk about the rules and how, and, and how it can be done.
I think that's very important.
I just wanted to present that as in, see if maybe there's some way we can gain traction as a board to make that happen.
And do I remember correctly, I think our liaison, Peter Gardner, he vaguely referenced some legal concern, but said he would get back to us about it. I'm not saying I know what that is, it's just I remember him saying that, that just went, okay, if you could be more clear and specific, so we know there either is or is not a reason we can, he was suggesting it couldn't be discussed by us as a body.
It'd be a good opportunity for the attorney, he's always on our, as our staff here on each meeting, it'd be a good opportunity for him to, to come in and he could explain that. If that's his stance, he can explain that stance to the board.
So maybe as part of, of your request for that agenda item, we'd want to include in having the city attorney to be present here to at least give us the rationale.
That would be great, yes. Yeah, as a matter of fact, that would, that's a great idea. Because I've, I've read some things that I would like to get clarification on.
Okay. Do you have a motion for, um, adjournment?
I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
Okay. And is there anybody in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I got my janitor pad ripped off on my truck right now. All right, bye, guys.
Good night, Todd. Thank you. Well, I think you did a very good job of engaging Mr. Raby to show we were trying to work with him as he started to go off into his angry mad path. So thank you.
Oh, I get it, but in all actuality, we just gave him a favor. He's gonna make more money.
You understand, you understand that.
That's what I wanted to know. Like, why are you giving bad words?
It's gonna make it easier for him too, because he just puts a new frame, the new windows in the new frame, and it just needs to be all of that.
Yeah, it goes like this. I'm sorry, the DRB is costing you a lot more than this. I've shopped at Home Depot a lot and they take windows back.
I'm gonna be just a hawk in a gym. I'm gonna go out to this and maintain them. So anyway, I'm really glad you were here because I saw this at the last meeting and I was like, it's definitely here, he has something to say about what you're proposing for the commercial district, because it was almost, uh, it almost did come together with what would have been considered and what we proposed. And there's also particles going on there. And I just said, I have a certain, though, I don't really think this is appropriate. Thank you. He was like, sent and saying, well, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have any vulnerability. So we're gonna defer this to the next meeting. Yes.
In your case, yes.
Yes?
I didn't say that.
Oh, my.
I need to go to... There, but for the grace of God's, go we, the DRB.
The DRB. So do we need packets and stuff? Or do we do it? It's a problem and...
I can hear him turn away.
That's Joe's problem now. Well, this meeting went in ways I couldn't have expected, and I'm very pleased.
Well, you can think... Don't blame him for that.
Are they gonna go to, are they gonna take that to the board adjustment problem?
They need to. Um, I, I have no idea. I mean, how they, thought they would come up at us with no new material to ask. I mean, what, what we were presenting prior to the meeting, what the public was noticed on, was a, a re, a review of the same application we denied, essentially.
Reconsider, no.
So that's why I was like, well, there's nothing...
But he, but he lost by a tie and he was hoping for a break at the tie.
But that's not how the rules work.
No.
The vote is the vote, so unless...
It's a tie, it's a denial, and there's a resubmission with new application.
New information.
New parameters for us to make another decision.
Or go up and apply to the board of adjustment and make your case to them.
I'd really love, I'd really love to get some, to get some, some, a whole policy in place, you know, regarding some of these different, different items, so that everybody is absolutely the same.
In the United Kingdom, we have a lot of historic stuff, right?
Really?
Oh, yeah. And, you know, if you have grade one listed building, you cannot use lead paint on it. It has to be lead paint.
Okay.
It has to be the same wood that's used to repair the windows as the original ones were. So it's older, they have to be repaired with older sashes, made exactly the same. And this, this is like rigidly enforced. If you're grade two listed, it's just what's seen from the front applies, and you put perspex double lacing around the back if you want.
Yeah.
But...
That would be a way to be able to make a distinction if you could not sort of wrench in it to go, we're gonna make a distinction in our historic districts, commercial, residential, for example.
But, but you know, the buildings like, like you guys were dealing with there, it, it fronts on Main Street, but it's also very visible. I mean, it's not like it has a backyard. It's, it's also right on
It's the way it runs through.
Right on Subway.
Yeah.
So, so you had to treat, you had to treat Subway the same issue with
Yes.
The building's on the other side of the street where the front is. I don't think that was unfair. But, but yeah, if you treat the front different, that could be a, a good way to do that.
But we've done that with residential. We've said, okay, we'll let this slide pass because it's up against the retaining law.
Yeah, I think this, we've got to be, uh, fair in that, Josh.
But then we have to articulate what, what those factors are, would we make those exceptions, which is not clear in our, it's not clear in all of our guidelines.
It doesn't matter what they did, I think we got the false front and everything else behind it. That's, you know, and, and I don't...
We're still gonna get requests for exceptions.
Oh, wow.
And must we have a...
That's why you guys are not really discussing.
Well, I mean, I need to reference legal actions.
Yeah, and see, that's what they want, that's what the county wants to do.
That's my concern is that's...
Because you guys understand the rules are here and here and here, and you guys are familiar with it.
That's what I get concerned about.
All right. Here's a problem. People just buy windows like that, actually, that look like everyday windows. I don't think you can. They have to be, you'd have to get them like...
Somebody's paying that much, he's gonna buy it. So unless, well, insulator is up in our...
They still have windows.
We're just trying to be flexible. We're gonna...
I think, I think John, I think we need to...
And that's why we can give them a, you know, the rest.
Yeah, you know, I almost, I almost turned off. You're not here, you're set to turn this at the airport, you know, you, that's unacceptable behavior. You know, it's like...
Yeah, I don't, it's not, it's definitely not professional.
Because I can tell.
Yeah.
I think we can't. I don't really stand with my father.
I've got major league stuff. I never trust that anyone. And the meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. Well, you, you de-escalated very nicely with Mr. Raby. And I've seen him, I personally experienced him going off a beam when he was working on the job a few years ago, and I remember I just looked at him like, and you think I never hired you again after this? Okay, if this works for you, it's not working for me.
This over here, you've just got stuff all over the place, Joe.
I did.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Good night, John. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming again. I, I really appreciate that.
It was a good meeting.
I like that.
Yeah, that's, uh...
I made my dinner, but I'm tired.
Hey, Mike blew those dudes out of the waters. Like, what are you doing here? Mike, like, what are you doing here? You got denied. Like, those two guys that are trying to deal with ginger steak.
Yeah, but I had, but I had an email from the, from the bridge saying that you guys could hear.
Oh, really?
He did, he did that, he did so.
Oh, well, he got denied easily. I, dude, I was getting ready to go off of that, I was like, gonna, gonna go off on the guy.
Hold on here.
You know?
Why won't it stop? We're, we're recording all of this talk.
Oh, whatever.
Gotta stop it, and it won't. It keeps zooming.
I just, I just can't believe that they, you know, outwardly lie to the board and say that none of them, not out of three adults.